Um, so I'm gonna open the meeting, uh, the Sandusky City Planning Commission meeting of May 27th, um, call the meeting to order. Um, if someone could call the roll, again, I'm having trouble logging in, so I don't know what the problem is, it's probably my inexperience, but, um, so if someone would call the roll for the meeting, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. McGory?
Here, by phone.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Minzer?
Here.
Mr. Whelan?
Here.
Mr. Zulov?
Here.
Mr. Galia?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Is that it?
Yep, that's everyone.
Okay, all right, thank you. So it appears we have a quorum. Uh, has everybody received a copy of the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
And ha- has everybody, have everybody read those meetings? And, uh, would anybody care to make a motion to approve those minutes, minutes as presented?
Mr. Chairman, David Miller, I'll make a motion to approve them as distributed.
Uh, is there a second?
I'll second it. Jim Jackson.
Okay. Been moved and seconded, any discussion? No, no discussion, uh, uh, then, uh, take a vote on the, on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Uh, a- any opposed? None opposed, so the minutes are approved. Um, m- moving on to the next order of business, uh, there's an adjudication hearing on the matter of the application submitted by Katie Karabkin for a conditional use permit to allow a residential business, roadside business use within the local business zoning district that exists at parcel number 56 dash 00949 point 000, street address 634 Columbus Avenue. Um, as this is a hearing, um, would the, uh, city, uh, uh, not prosecutor, uh, uh, a- anyway, uh, Trevor, would you, is Trevor there?
Trevor is not on, I don't believe, so we would have to, if you don't mind, just have an everyone that's speaking swear, swearing.
Okay, okay. So, um, I- I'm just gonna have at request that everybody who speaks swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth with respect to this application. Um, I presume staff would like to present the matter first.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
This is for an adjudication hearing for, uh, a conditional use permit to allow a roadside business use within the local business district at 634 Columbus Avenue. It's the northeast corner of Columbus Avenue and Monroe Street. The applicant is also on the phone, uh, for at the end of this presentation if there's other questions for the applicant. Uh, they are proposing to utilize the property for a small event space. The existing zoning is local business. The last use was as a chocolate shop. Uh, the property surrounding, is surrounded by other parks and by parks and recre- residential housing. Adjacent property owners were notified of this meeting. Uh, we did receive one letter from, uh, Mr. Fike, which states, uh, "My wife and I reviewed the request for a conditional use permit to roadside business and are in favor of the project. We live directly across the street from this property." Uh, the applicant has applied to allow the property be, to be used as a roadside business use. Uh, the location, as mentioned, is at the corner of Monroe Street and Columbus Avenue. The existing site is a, um, a nice house, a brick house on the corner. Uh, the, this frontage won't change much, um, and the, uh, interior will just be altered to allow for a gathering space. Um, the, they do intend to, uh, do an exterior patio on the southeast corner, um, which, um, the applicant may want to speak more to. And they have, uh, got a proposed, uh, parking agreement with Zion Lutheran Church for a, uh, a parking space for their, uh, events. Uh, in conclusion, staff recommends approval for the, um, for the event, uh, space, uh, for the conditional use event. They must maintain the existing parking, with the conditions of maintaining the existing parking agreement with Zion Evangelical, Evangelical Lutheran Church. If the par- parking agreement is no longer valid, the applicant must enter into an agreement with another property owner. Uh, they must have amplified, must limit amplified sound after 9:00 PM on the weekdays or 10:00 PM on the weekends. And if staff receives complaints about the business, the owner will be required to return to Planning Commission, who may then either revoke or modify the conditional use permit. Um, I do realize that you did not see the other slides, so I'll just briefly go through them again quickly, uh, for those that are able to see them. Uh, that's the proposed interior, these were in your packet, and, uh, the existing site that you all are well aware of, as well as the location. Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Volts. Um, uh, are there any questions or comments for staff from the commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Zulov?
Yeah, just give me a second here.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, we, I, I thought, I thought Mr. Volts said something about the, the use as residential, the current use is residential now. Um, do, do we know anything about the history or, or what, uh, what, whether the, what the original purpose of the, uh, building was? I, it's, before it was a chocolate shop, as far as I know, for a long time, it was a flower shop. It may have even-
Correct.
-been purpose-built for, to be a flower shop, I don't know, or an addition or, or an, uh, an alteration at some point in its history, what do we know?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I do know that there is a, uh, conditional use permit pulled for, uh, previously for either the flower shop or the chocolate shop in 1999 as well. Um, other than those two things, I am not sure.
Um, yeah, and, eh, my recollection-
Do we know the nature of that, that, uh, conditional use permit, that previous condition was, was that to allow it to be used as a flower shop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Eh, well, my recollection is when I first came back to this town in the early seventies, it was Russell Flower Shop, and was that for many, many years until it closed, then it was closed for several years, I think, until the chocolate shop went in. And I don't know whether the conditional use permit had expired and the chocolate shop had to, to obtain another one, um, but apparently they did whatever they needed to do in order to operate. Um, I, I, I would make the observation, when I look at what's allowed under the existing zoning, one of the things is sale, serving, and consumption of soft drinks, juices, so sale, serving, and consumption of soft drink, juices, ice cream, beer, wine, at such place, uh, at such places as lunchrooms and tea rooms. Um, quite honestly, I know this is being described as an assembly place, but I think the actual operation is, is gonna be very close to what would be allowed under the current jurisdiction, or the current zoning. Um, it's more like a lunchroom or a tea room. Now, granted, the people are all gonna be there for maybe one purpose, and there's gonna be some common discussion among everybody, but it's not gonna be like an auditorium. It's gonna be more serving some food and beverage with some, some communication back and forth. So personally, I don't have a problem with the change. I would also note that just a few doors down, what used to be the old KFC building, um, is now a, like a German restaurant, beer hall rental, um, which, which I think is good, but, and we've got the neighbor right across the street, uh, in agreement with this application, so my thoughts are positive about the request. I also wonder if it's even necessary, but I don't have a problem with the request. A- any other comments?
I, I have, Mr. Chairman, if you would, uh, this is Jim Jackson. Uh, I'm seventy-four years-
Yes, yes, Jim.
I'm seventy-four years old, and as far back as I can remember, uh, it was Russell's Flower Shop, and I go back a long way. Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, who's that speaking? Miss Zulov?
It's Zulov.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, yeah, it was, it, I don't know how long Russell's was closed, but it was also, uh, trying to think, it was Bella Flora and s- s- and it was also Willa Leaf, which was sort of a mixed floral and retail.
Yeah, gift shop.
And then it was closed for a while, and, uh, I, I don't know if it's, I'm aware of some improvements that happened over the years, I, I don't, I think it's always been sort of a, or certainly in recent history, it's, it's been a, a live-work sort of space with a, an apartment in the back and on the second floor. Uh, it, it had a very old, mu- had, had to been circa, maybe pre-war walk-in cooler, uh, for, for florals, I, it, I, I wouldn't be surprised if the structure was built to be a flower shop. This isn't, this isn't on our, is, is this, well, first clue would be our historic inventory, is anybody, um, not that it would be necessary, but, but, uh, we, we could check the historic, our historic inventory. I'm sure it's not a-
Yeah, I think-
May I chime in, or do I have to wait till the end? This is Katie Karabkin.
Um, is, is, is-
At the pleasure of the-
Anybody else from the, yeah, um, I, I would, I would say Katie, go ahead and, and speak. This is Pete McGory, but go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Pete. Um, the information that I have is that Leo Wagner was the, um, was the original owner of this building, and he opened his flower shop in 1918. Um, this was before Russell's Flower Shop, I think Russell's Flower Shop, um, is, is what everyone knows, but, um, from the information that I've gathered, 1918 was when the shop on the corner of Columbus and East Monroe was opened, uh, as Wagner Flower Shop. And the, um, cooler that was spoken about was, um, original to the building, um, and, um, I, I have pictures and, and research from online as well, I, I didn't include that, but, um, I do have all of that Sandusky history, there were, um, Sandusky Register articles written, um, let's see, Sandusky Register back, dating back to 1927, but it was the flower shop first.
Katie, let me ask you this question, are you familiar with the staff's, uh, recommendations for approval on, or I should say, the conditions about the-
I am, yes.
You know, okay, and are, are you on board with those conditions?
Absolutely, they're very reasonable.
Okay, okay, okay. Um, well, I think this is a, a grand project, personally, I'm in favor of it, are there any other questions or comments for, uh, for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
From the board? Yes.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, Katie-
Yeah, Mr. Zulov.
Katie, that was, uh, that was very helpful, uh, appreciate that, um, uh, sorry for the informality, I, I, I'm trying to remember your last name, I would've said Ms. K.
Karabkin.
Karabkin, uh, thank you for that, that was, that was very helpful. Um, yeah, that's, that's, that's such a cool building, and it's exciting, uh, to, uh, to, to see an innovative, uh, business go in there.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, uh, does anybody care to make a motion on the application?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve with the, uh, uh, subject to the conditions as outlined in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Zulov, is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Go ahead, Jim.
Okay.
I'll second, Jim Jackson. Yeah.
Okay, all right, um-
Second.
Okay. Uh, a- any, any further discussion, been moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Uh, take a vote, uh, call the roll on the motion?
Mr. McGory?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Whelan?
Yes.
Mr. Zulov?
Yes.
Mr. Galia?
Yes.
And Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous, so the, the, the application passes. Uh, Katie, Ms. Karabkin, congratulations, and good luck.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Okay, okay. Um, the, let me flip back to the agenda. Um, so the next matter on the agenda is under new business, the topic of new business-
Is now exiting.
Okay. Uh, presentation and discussion of, on design and upgrades to Warren Street, um, is that going to be by staff?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, that will be, uh, but from our, uh, engineering staff, Josh Snyder is, uh, with us to do a short presentation.
Okay. Um, well, Mr. Snyder, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, this is Josh with Engineering Department, I will, uh, attempt to share my screen with you. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is, is it full screen presentation, Greg, or is it, is it, uh?
It's full screen.
Okay, excellent, okay. So, uh, we have the Warren Street, East Elm and, and East Madison Street, uh, traffic improvements, driven in part by recent park expansion, popularity of the Splash Pad Park, and Warren Street being reconstructed. So we'll start with some, we will start with some history. This will work.
Yeah.
Although- Okay. Uh, did that change for everyone?
Yes.
All right. So as you all know, this is the park that was recently completed, Hereon Park, uh, on the north, uh, triangular shaped portion of Hereon Park. This, this is new play equipment that is still roped off, no one is, has been able to play on it yet due to COVID, um, but this was just finished, I'm gonna say, two weeks ago, the brown, brownish material on the ground is, is actually called pour-in-place, it's a rubberized surface, we do not have this at any other park in the city. Um, additionally to this graphic, there is a four-foot sidewalk that wraps the perimeter of this park, um, for access of, uh, carts, bicycles, um, baby, baby buggies, and so, um, the rubberized surface is very soft, it's unique, again, we don't have it anywhere else, um, but it's a safety feature and reduces maintenance at this park. So this, this is what was added this spring, and it adds to the splash pad that is due west of this. We'll start with some existing, uh, traffic trends, we, we have traffic counts on East Elm Street and on East Madison Street. So the segment that is shown, um, East Elm between Warren and Hereon Street, the average daily traffic as, as it's split, there's 224 vehicles a day headed northbound, and 204 vehicles a day headed southbound in this segment of East Elm. On East Madison, between Warren and Hereon Street, there is, uh, average daily traffic of 130 vehicles per day in the eastbound direction, and 161 vehicles a day in the westbound direction. So, directionally, East Elm has almost the same, and East Madison has slightly different, uh, slightly greater westbound traffic volumes. Undoubtedly, most of this is, is residential, uh, and some cut-through traffic, probably 0% of tourist-oriented, uh, or, um, other type of traffic, truck traffic, if you will. So here's a, a slide of the overall park and roadway concept, uh, can you all see my cursor along Warren Street here? Is my cursor working, Greg?
Yes.
No. I do see, I do see your, your cursor, it's a very small yellow or white, uh, I guess it's a white arrow.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's on Warren Street now between Elm and East Madison.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so, um, probably the, the easiest way is by color, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna describe a couple things here, conceptually, so we're showing, so this will be new, uh, new Warren Street, uh, it's obvious Warren Street needs to be reconstructed, this is a long, um, awaited, long-planned project, and so Warren Street will be reconstructed along with its reconstruction, we've talked about, uh, taking Elm Street, and in yellow, it's basically denoting, denoting the curb, the outer yellow lines are denoting the curbs, and the inner yellow lines are, are denoting striping. Um, this would provide eight-foot wide parking, um, parallel parking areas along the curb, and then a 14-foot drive lane for one-directional, unidirectional traffic. Um, again, planning off of the, the park and, and the amenities here at this park, uh, was, was some of the impetus for, for these, these things, these changes. The black, the white-black line is a multi-use path which is planned along the west side of Warren Street, uh, coming down from the segment, uh, of Warren that has been completed, I believe, four years ag- four years ago, three years ago now. Um, and so this black line is, is representing a, a continuation of that, uh, multi-use path. In teal color, along the west side of Warren Street is diagonal parking, so this would be paved parking, uh, in diagonal fashion, pretty much, uh, for the park, but there would be public spaces. Yellow, um, the yellow lines that kind of look like, uh, centipedes here, the yellow lines are designating crosswalks, as we will, uh, designate them, uh, with this project. Little bit of, more on the geometry of it, so the proposed intersection of Elm Street, by doing, doing this configuration and squaring it up with Warren, uh, puts this intersection about 100 feet away from Jefferson Street. Uh, this spacing is important, uh, for traffic safety purposes, for visibility purposes. Uh, currently, as you're all aware, Elm Street pretty much runs into Jefferson and Warren at the same time, uh, and then n- north of Jefferson, you have the divided Warren Street, so it's kind of a weird, um, five-legged intersection, if you will. Uh, oftentimes, when multiple people would, would pull up, uh, it's, one driver may not know who's, who's supposed to be going, uh, who goes first, and creates kind of an awkward traffic situation. So this truly separates Elm Street by geometrically squaring the intersection up with, with Warren here on the north end of Elm. As I, as I said before, Elm Street, uh, would, it's 30-foot wide pavement currently, and so that would result in a 14-foot drive lane and, and two eight-foot parking aisles along the curbs. Um, this would increase parking area for, uh, the residents and for the, the adjacent park. Uh, the southern end, as you can see here, there is a narrowing of the intersection as it meets Hereon Avenue, and so what, what this does here is, is, uh, really accommodates the one-way traffic on this end. By making this one-way, pedestrians need to, need only to look in one direction for oncoming traffic, uh, making it safer. Madison Street?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, uh, just to clarify, could we talk about which direction the unidirectional of the one-way street would be, again?
Yeah, staff has, staff has proposed, uh, northbound.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, so here's, here's another graphic showing more, more of that detail, uh, one-way is headed northbound. Um, the segment of Madison Street, again, there's, there's the, the lesser traffic count on that section of, of Madison, uh, staff has proposed to close that section of Madison, uh, to, to vehicles. And so, um, kind of a recap, the, the angle parking on, on the west side of Warren Street provides about 36 total angle parking spaces. Uh, another highlight would be a mid-block crosswalk from CVS Park, CVS driveway to the, um, to the parking area here, that's what's denoted it with the blue, uh, curbing, if you will, here in the middle, in the middle of the southern triangle of, of Hereon Park. Um, the multi-use path, as we talked before, would wrap the backside of the angle parking, and then, uh, another, another facet of the Warren Street improvement is, is improving the storm sewers, um, as in creating one. Uh, currently, there's a combined sewer system, and, and that really needs to be separated, so that was another driver and another goal of the, of the Warren Street project, um, of, of which we're, again, we're still in preliminary phase of design, and that's why we're bringing you guys in. So, kind of a summary of this configuration, one-way, uh, northbound, on, uh, East Elm, Madison Street closed, uh, and effectively, the goal would be to slow traffic in and through the existing park areas, uh, allowing better continuity between the two triangles of Hereon Park, um, the, the, the accessibility and pedestrians traversing both parks. Some of the thoughts are that, that this, this area, the Madison Street closed area, would allow for, um, would allow space for, for chalk art, bicycles, skateboards, scooters, uh, cornhole-type, uh, games, possible festivals, vendor spaces, food trucks, uh, it kind of opens up, it's kind of a blank space that opens, opens this park up for, uh, events that it previously hadn't, um, been able to be exposed to. So, just kind of some brainstorming, some ideas and, and, and thoughts for that area. So moving forward, uh, on a temporary basis, the city would like to move forward with installing temporary barriers and signs in place to effectively make East Elm Street one-way, uh, closing East Madison Street as, uh, safety enhancements for the parks area. This can be done yet this year- This can be done yet this year without doing hard ballards here or anything permanent in place. These can be done at pretty nominal cost yet this year. So, much like the pedestrian crosswalks you all have seen and read about on Hancock Street, the thought process would be to put up some temporary accommodations to generate this and then collect feedback through the summer season and maybe into the fall and see how well-received it is, how well the locals, the immediate residents that are most affected, how they are impressed with it. So, that's really the concept. Certainly take any questions on any of the infrastructure part of it. Again, we're in preliminary stage of the design and so, that's why we're at the point of bringing it to you guys.
Mr. Chairman, could I jump on?
Sure, please do.
Thanks, Josh. I was just going to add, we did notify residents along Elm Street about this meeting. I did get one phone call from the owner of 519 Elm Street. They called and said they received the letter and they expressed interest and approval of one-way traffic traveling towards Warren Street. So I just wanted to add that in.
Thank you, Mr. Bolts. Any questions or comments from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Go ahead, Ms. Miller.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Not to say that I'm unfavorable, I am favorable to the infrastructure elements separating storm sewers from sanitary sewers is a big concern of mine. My questions are more along the lines of how this coordinates with what I understood was a long-term plan to take essentially a linear park going from J.C. to Shoreline, where I would understand this would be sort of a segment in that park. Is that still part of the planning long-term?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, this is Greg. I think the pathway shown is extremely important to that goal of getting from Shoreline to J.C. Park. Also, we're working really closely with engineering on making sure that the intersection at Huron, Monroe and Warren is good and a really comfortable intersection for the pathway users. So yes, this is a really important piece to that linear park.
Glad to hear that. Then my second question is related to the other triangle at Monroe, south of where we're talking about on the other side of Huron Ave, where I think there's still a baseball field across from the greenhouse. Would this be an opportunity to think about enhancing the connectivity, a safer way to cross Huron there? I know it's a really goofy intersection there too by the greenhouse. I think that's one way now, but there's always a crossing guard there for the kids and stuff. But, once the other two triangles are essentially connected by closing Elm Street, it would seem that we could anticipate the new parking would be a great asset for the ball field and that there would be demand for a safer crossover of Huron at the apex of those three triangles.
I will speak from the plane perspective, is that we do want to, we are looking at it holistically. The traffic calming on Huron is really important to us, especially, we have discussed rerouting Route 6 along Warren Street to do that on Huron. We don't know with all the available developable land along Warren if that's the smart move to do. But if we keep it along Huron, we do want to definitely traffic calm Huron. And Josh may speak to the ability of ours to do better mid-block crossings there or even just enhancing the existing crossings to make them safer. I do know that probably falls outside of what is currently in design, but it is something that we wanted to do pre-COVID this year. Now with the current situation, I'm not sure we'll be able to get there.
Well, if I can kind of advance that thought a little bit, it seems like putting the parking on Warren as part of this plan, it really detracts from the prospect of rerouting Route 6 down Warren to avoid Huron. It seems like, you know, that's kind of turning that into a really slow parking lot kind of situation and not the truck route.
Yeah, we agree. I think staff, at this point, thinks that it should stay on Huron Avenue. But that is why the parking is shown on Warren.
Okay, so that kind of represents a change of plan from rerouting Route 6 on Warren, right?
Correct. It's just a constantly conversation we're having. We do not, at this point, we are not thinking that we would go that route.
Okay.
This is Josh. I'll add into Greg's commentary. Crossing Huron Ave to the southernmost triangle, if you will, of Huron Park, it may be the time to be thinking about narrowing up crosswalks at the intersection of Huron and Madison here, where we currently have three lanes. As you know, Huron Ave is three lanes with the middle lane, a dedicated left-turn lane, turning onto First Street at the intersection here to the south. What the most recent traffic study of Route 6 has shown is that there's actually more traffic coming to Cedar Point from the east than from the west. Formerly, the city has accommodated US-250 traffic and assuming that was the heaviest, and it was historically, the heavier traffic volume for us. With the most recent study finished last fall, they've actually realized and quantified that there's actually more traffic coming from the east on Cleveland Road and the eastern portion of US-6, lesser on this west end of US-6. And so, we probably can look again at the need for the long-left turn lane headed southbound on Huron Ave and very well could do something at this intersection, at this crossing, at Huron and Madison, to make this crossing more accommodating for pedestrians. So, that's all I'll add.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Zuloff.
Okay, there's so much to talk about here. The first thing I'd say is I'm happy that we're, again, visiting the question of, does Route 6 need to bisect a park? And it's, you know, it's a leg of the historic Masonic symbol there, that Huron Avenue. But it need, what I'm not hearing is any discussion of routing Route 6 down East Monroe and up Hancock, which I think would be much more feasible than continuing down Huron. You need to, you need to get back to the rest of Route 6 via then probably Washington, which is a predominantly residential boulevard. Not a boulevard, but it's a wide, street-wide, right-of-ways. Hancock could arguably benefit from the traffic because it has some residential character, but it also has commercial use. So, that raises a rather complex question. Could Huron be closed completely? Could it be done one-way or traffic calming? No trucks, very narrow, interminable traffic lights, driving Google Maps anywhere but down Huron? But it introduces the tantalizing concept of getting rid of it completely and making a ball field that's actually usable as a serious ball field other than, you know, a little more than T-ball. It's such a short, such a short home run there. We also have to, so this is all, the use of Huron Avenue as Route 6 gets, is inescapably tied to the thorny question about that memorial ball field and, which we stepped in last time around when we were proposing updating the park. We also should definitely make sure, I like taking a fresh look at this thing and then only, then and only then, going back and looking at the history of other attempted changes. It was actually proposed to move that ball field, which was perceived to be dishonoring the memory of the person for whom the park is named, which I have to apologize, I forget who that is. The name escapes me. So, there's that history, that recent history of a master plan for that park that appears to be obviously defunct if we're looking over that. We're right, anything we can do, getting rid of that segment of Huron Avenue completely would definitely get rid of a, not only a difficult five-points intersection at Monroe, Huron, at Monroe, Huron and Warren, but an eight, arguably eight-points intersection at Madison and Huron and Elm and, what is that, Franklin there? So, fortunately, there's so little traffic there, it's not terribly problematic. And getting rid of that segment through the Park of East Madison would be an improvement. You should get zero objection to that because the character of those streets on either side are quiet residential streets and if I lived there, I would welcome reducing what little through-traffic there is there. There is some. It begs the question, should Elm Street be one-way all the way to East Monroe? And that's also a very little-used, really only necessary. We already have a one-way street though. Help me out here, is that Franklin where the greenhouse is? I know the answer to that.
You're asking me?
Yes, that's, Mr. Chairman, that's Franklin.
Yeah, Franklin, yeah.
I knew that.
I do want to.
So that's already one-way. So, anything we can do to unify that park is great and it would, getting rid of Huron and that segment of Madison would both unify the park and improve challenging intersections. I don't think that Warren works. Trying to reroute Route 6 down Warren just doesn't work for a whole lot of reasons. But I think Monroe to west on Monroe and then north on Hancock is feasible and it's even feasible to, I think, just go one block. Go, let's say you were westbound on Route 6. You would come to that intersection, turn left on East Monroe and then right on Franklin, widen that, make it two-way. Yes, it would encroach on the park a little bit, but what you'd get back is a whole lot, you'd get rid of two other streets and have a unified park. So, routing 6 down Franklin wouldn't be out of the question. It would crowd the greenhouse a little bit, but, you know, that's not a residential use. There's, I think, maybe, what, is there one? There are just a few residential properties on East Monroe and that's a heavily-traveled road anyway. So it probably wouldn't be too rough on that segment of Monroe. Those are the first things. Oh, the only other comment I'd have is regarding parking. All that diagonal parking on the southbound lane of Warren between Madison and Elm would end up largely serving a commercial printing plant there. They're very dependent on that parking in that area. And if we're redesigning that, it begs the question, you know, should the boulevard be extended down that segment? We have to look, I think we have to be very creative in that and also ask ourselves, you know, be careful about designing for a a very old business that hopefully will be there for a long time. But we certainly would want to consult the owners and make sure that we're not designing for something that's, you know, that they're planning on closing next year.
Mike, is there anybody else here that wants to say anything?
I'd welcome feedback for my comments from the staff.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think all the comments were really, are good and things we have discussed. I think we do intend to look at them really closely, especially the, that Huron, the eight-point intersection that Mr. Zuloff was speaking about. That won't be part of this project, but is definitely high on our radar for working on in the near future. So I think we'll have that discussion soon.
Mr. Chairman?
This is just a form of a discussion, I think.
Yes.
Not looking for any kind of approval of a plan.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Zuloff.
Chairman, I would encourage us to make sure that if we're doing this, we should amend the master plan to the park, I mean, formally or informally, and consider this holistically so that it is ensconced in our, you know, institutional memory that even though we can't do some of these things immediately, that we should continue. You know, master plans are made to be broken. Nobody expects them to be, they're dynamic things. And then one more quick little comment before I forget. It would be pretty bad, one-way north on Elm is good. One-way south would be horrible. Kids crossing streets, look left, okay? So one-way, so leaving the, well, it's, one-way is sort of problematic either way, adjoining parks, okay? The problem is that when they're, if they're leaving the park, they'll look the correct direction. I'm amending my thoughts as I speak. The trouble with one-way is people might look the wrong way if they're not realizing it's a one-way street and get clobbered. Because that's just, you know, people don't think about it, but they, everybody looks left when they cross the street because they don't necessarily anticipate one-way traffic.
Okay. Any other discussion on this matter, on this presentation, I should say? Hearing none, I guess move on to old business? Is there any old business to bring up? Um, I will bring up something for staff. Um, Mr. Bullets, does anybody have any idea when we're gonna, uh, get back to live meetings?
Uh, sadly, uh, no, not at this point in time. I, I wish I had a better answer for you. We, we always want it to be the next month and, uh, it will have to wait until the, uh, the governor lifts his, uh, 10-person meeting restrictions.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I kind of like having meetings, uh, if I just have to put a shirt over my pajamas, I think that's awesome. I'm fine with it.
Do you have pants on?
That's a little personal.
Okay.
None of your busi-, none of your business.
Okay, okay. So I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna accept the answer is no. And, uh, all right.
They're, they're shorts.
Okay, okay.
Targos shorts.
All right. Okay. All right. Uh, anybody care to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Uh, I'll make a motion. I want to know if you're wearing pants before you adjourn the meeting.
I, I, they are. I do, I have them on, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Jim Jackson. I'll make a motion to adjourn during the meeting.
David Miller, second.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?